Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to the Worcester School Committee meeting tonight. We're going to hold our second interview for Superintendent Schools. And we're going to start with a roll call. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Kamara?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Petty?
Here. The General Businesses, the interview, Malika Savoy-Brooks, as a finalist for the position of Superintendent of the Worcester Public Schools. And Jane, I'm sorry, Ms. Brendan, do you want to come in?
So Mayor Petty and school committee members, I would like to introduce you to Malika Savoy-Brooks. And I'm here with my colleague Lisa Walters. Enjoy.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Savoy-Brooks, take a seat. And I'll just read the bio real quickly, then go over the ground rules. Dr. Savoy-Brooks currently is the Chief Academic Support Officer for the School District of Philadelphia, a position that she has held since 2018. She's also been the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Instructional Resources for the School District of Philadelphia, and the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for the Chester Upland District. She also served as principal, a director of instruction, a prevention and intervention coach, a curriculum content academic coach for the Philadelphia schools, where she began her career in education as a teacher. Dr. Savoy-Brooks holds a Doctorate of Educational Leadership, Curriculum Instructional Design from the University of Phoenix. Dissertation study teaches perception of the pre-service experience in preparation for cultural competence. She's part of the Urban Superintendent Academy of the American Association of School Administrators from Howard University. Dr. Savoy-Brooks also holds a Master's of Science in Educational Leadership and a Master's of Science in Elementary Education from St. Joseph's University, and a Bachelor's of Science in Food Service and Management from the Delaware Valley College of Science and Agriculture. Welcome.
Thank you.
And so, we will ask 10 questions. And you have, give or take, five minutes to answer those questions. And at the end, you can do a closing, or you can ask questions, whatever you'd like to do. And so, I will start with the first question. And don't be afraid to ask us to repeat the question, too. And what are the top three priorities that you would identify in your entry plan as essential to the Worcester Public Schools? Please describe why, what action steps, and what timeline you would take in addressing these priorities?
Can you respond? Okay. I think the first priority is to accelerate my learning regarding Worcester Public Schools. And in saying that analyzing the data, student data, human resource data, talent data. I would also, in accelerating my learning, looking at and engaging myself with community partners and other stakeholders to learn about Worcester. I would look, I would also talk to internal stakeholders, leaders, teachers, students, and central office staff to determine the current actions that are aligned to the strategic plan, the vision and the mission of Worcester Public Schools. So that would be the first priority. Accelerate my learning on what is happening now. And ensure that it is in alignment to data sources. My second priority is to review the current priorities of the district as it relates to Universal, UDL, Universal Design for Learning, as it relates to culturally responsive teaching, as it relates to post-secondary readiness, as it relates to academic achievement of all students. I will look at those three priorities and see what actions are aligned to those, what current actions are aligned to those priorities, the areas of strength in the actions of the district, and what are the barriers and/or challenges that currently exist. And then I will look at the data to determine evidence of effectiveness or next actions that are necessary. The third priority after accelerating my learning, looking at the current status of the district, is to outline my vision for the work and establish goals under my leadership as they align to the mission and vision of Worcester Public Schools and the current strategic plan.
That's it. Thank you. Our next question will be by Member McCullough.
Thank you. Further development of community relationships is a priority of the committee. Please tell us how you have developed these relationships in your current and past roles, and how this has benefited the district. Share with us what you envision this will look like in Worcester.
Past experiences as a principal, network and/or region administrator, an assistant superintendent, and now Chief Academic Officer requires me to become engaged with the community. One of the reasons why I engage with the community and my jobs require me to become engaged with the community is because I'm setting expectations for students. When I'm setting expectations for students, I need to understand who the students are, from which they come, and what are the necessary supports that families and communities can share with us regarding the student's academic program and social-emotional development. I also use community engagement to support what the goals are for the district. That is important because the community, like us, are closest to our students and/or families. It is imperative that there is a direct connection and a relationship between the district and the community as it relates to developing the student. Lastly, I use the community engagement piece to kind of regularly evaluate my actions and my leadership as it relates to instructional programming. I can think that I'm fabulous and have a wonderful plan, but if it's not representative of the students that we serve and is not meeting the needs of the students that we serve, or if I'm misrepresenting a community in any way, I rely on the community to tell me that engage being proactive and engage during the implementation so that we can put in any corrective action that is necessary. How does that, how has it benefited me? Having that community engagement and being open and transparent with the community allows me to be solution-oriented and allow the community to support me in that place. I am responsible of special education. I'm responsible for the instructional program. I'm responsible for multilingual programs. It is imperative that whether there are advocacy groups, community interest groups, or parent groups, or sometimes student groups, that they're giving us their perception and/or evidence of what we're implementing, whether it's working or not working well for them. And that's how I regulate the work that we're doing to determine if we're meeting needs or making progress in specific areas. We just developed the academic framework, which is inclusive of a culturally-linguistically inclusive foundation. My staff is responsible for holding roundtables, roundtable discussions with internal and external community stakeholders. That is important because we want to ensure that the ideas are not just coming from us. That will be implemented across the district, impacting over 9,000 teachers and 120,000 students. Having those roundtables allow us to get input from our stakeholders, internal and external, before anything is implemented or in its final stages. Another level of the benefit of community engagement, when we think about, which I haven't talked about, I said internal and external, but when we, community engagement is also representative of organizations that represents our workforce. That level of community engagement is important in addition to like Worcester, where there's a connection between city agencies and the school agency. That level of community engagement is important. One, because I need you to support the work that is happening in the district, and you need me to support the students that I have in the district. And I think that's the benefit. Oh, what does it look like in Worcester? So I just said that.
Yep. All set? Perfect. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Worcester is a very large school district with a need for open communication. What are your plans for communication between stakeholders, including staff, administrators, families, and the public?
I believe in being, and we use the term often, but being transparent. I'm going to say, instead of transparent, being truthful in what is occurring in the district, whether it is sharing our victories, but also sharing our challenges. One, that helps the community understand what I need is and how they can support us. Two, validating some of the work of the staff, at the same time validating the needs of the staff and students. How I communicate with community stakeholders. Again, having listening sessions, roundtables, specific interest, collaborative sessions, so that we are solution-oriented based on what is happening in the district. What is it that we need to resolve? And/or what is it that we need to initiate? So, one, again, is the collaborative sessions. Two, I think, weekly updates, whether they are YouTube updates or written documentation that is shared with families to let them know what is happening in the district, highlighting some work of our staff and our students, and/or sharing current updates. I think when it comes to the community, first, I would like to know what is the current perception of the district's communication system with the community. So it's easier for me to determine how I'm going to communicate internally with you and/or staff and students. But when we talk about the larger community, I'm curious to know what they already think about how we communicate, how we communicate, or not communicate based on their interest and/or need. So some kind of communication audit is necessary. Maybe not as formal. It could be a listening session. But just to figure out what is currently happening, and then how do we meet their need based on what they need? How do we meet their need based on what they communicate to us regarding communication? I think being open, going to different parts of the city to hold meetings, not necessarily having meetings at the district building or here. Going into the communities, going into the organizations and being a part of those organizations, visiting, having meetings. A level of engagement in their events is another way of communication. Lastly, I think the communication should also focus on the work of the district. How am I communicating my progress towards goals that I set for, under my leadership, and goals towards the district's initiative? Being very clear about that and aligning it to data sources for evidence of effectiveness.
All set? Perfect. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Member Novick.
Thank you. Good evening. As we've lost significant learning time in the classroom during the pandemic, what would be your plan to close the achievement and opportunity gap and help all of our students reach the highest possible goals, taking into account the disadvantages that our English learner students, our students of color, our students with disabilities, and our students in poverty may have?
Favorite question. Okay. So first, I want to ensure that every student have quality grade level, grade level standards-aligned instruction. That is the ultimate way to ensure that we are closing the gap on any learning loss. Two, I would want to review data to determine where the loss is evident. Literacy, mathematics, science, social studies by grade, even by standard slash by skill, to determine how we target instruction. There are two strategies that I would support teachers in implementing. One is small group instruction, and the other is independent learning activities. If there is learning loss that is not overall learning loss in a specific grade or across grades in the district, then we have to still meet the group, small group or individual needs of students. What does that look like? That would occur in instruction and/or practice in small group instruction and independent activities. Lastly, I'm going to try to describe this as quickly as possible. When we talk about learning loss, when I talked about standards-aligned instruction, it is important to look at, for third grader, it was the second graders that is now in the third grade. I'm not going to repeat third grade content because you missed something in, I mean, repeat second grade content because you missed second grade or you were in a virtual setting in second grade. What are those priority standards and/or skills that are aligned to third grade? So while I'm teaching the third grade, grade level content, I have to be cognizant of the seventh grade, I mean, the second grade skills that are aligned to that content and/or skill development so that I'm scaffolding the learning from last year to this year. And we have students who may not have had learning loss, so I can do the same thing by looking at fourth grade skills, too.
All set? Thank you. Our fifth question will be asked by Member Mailman.
Hi. Our district is investing mightily in expanded Chapter 74 vocational programs across the district.
It's helpful if I turn my microphone on, I guess. Start over? Okay. Molly's too nice. "Our district is investing mightily in expanded Chapter 74 vocational programs across the district. Please describe your experience and knowledge about vocational education and the distinctions with career and technical education, and your vision for maintaining the integrity of strong vocational educational curriculum."
One of my responsibilities now is to lead, evaluate, and support our career and technical education programs. Chapter 74 is the CTE and nonsense CTE slash vocational programming. Within the, I think it's 16 clusters, 79 careers, I believe. Don't quote me on those numbers. Okay. So with that, I would recognize what currently exists in the district, how is aligned to the workforce in Worcester and/or Massachusetts. I would also look at the expectation for careers to ensure that students who are engaged in various programs earning their credentials with us or after graduating and continuing their education, that they are in jobs that will lead to them being able to take care of themselves beyond poverty. And what is the stepping stone so that, or pathway so that if a student receives an entry job, how, what is the timeline and/or expectation for them or plan for them to seek further employment or higher grading jobs? I do think that the career and technical education programs, in my experience, the career and educational technical programs can rest in full schools, where career and technical educate, every child is assigned to a career and technical education program, and/or programs exist in comprehensive and/or neighborhood schools, and every person is not assigned to a program. There is opportunity also to have programmings that don't lead to the CTE requirements, but also put skills up for, students are engaged in programming that will still allow them to develop skills in trade. In addition to that, when students are engaged in the CTE programs, it's imperative to ensure that their English and mathematics skills are also aligned to grade level expectations. In every CTE program, they are either aligned to English and/or mathematics and/or science. And if students do not have a proficiency or mastery around grade level expectations upon graduation, then there is going to be a deficit in their ability to apply their trade at proficiency levels. So with CTE programming, I would like to see more inclusionary practices as it aligns to content, content courses, and content in theory based on the trade and the skill. Lastly, when we were talking about CTE programming, I want to see who's being successful in CTE programming. When we think about CTE programming and the diversity in Worcester, who is earning their, who are earning their credentials? Who is engaged in CTE programming? Who needs support in CTE programming so that they can also be successful? And where do we fall short in supporting all of the students that we serve to ensure whatever supports that we're putting in content courses, those same supports are in CTE courses so the students feel, can still have that scaffolding supports in those areas if you think about the child's full day?
Thank you. Okay. Our next question will be asked by Member Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell us your experience of working with children and families who don't look like you, who don't speak the language you do, or who do not have the economic advantages you do. Have, how have those experiences shaped your view of public education and its mission?
I think I am one of those students who didn't look like the population of staff who were supporting me. So I'm going to think about it that way, and then I'm going to make it more personal on being a leader in that position. I shared earlier that my experiences as an African-American female going to schools through college with people who didn't look like me, didn't grow up like me, weren't in the same societic-anomic status as me, made me stronger because of my foundation. I was fortunate to have parents and family who instilled in me to be proud of who I am and from which I came, and that also helped me in various situations. Our role as the leaders of the district is to ensure that every child feels that way in our system, that they are empowered to be who they are, and they are empowered to share who they are. They feel, see, and hear their representation in the quality of the content that we share, and they understand their value to Worcester and Massachusetts and the United States. Now, I'm going to say that as a leader, as a leader, my first experience with supporting children who didn't look like me was when I was in the other district, not the current district that I am in, and I had middle and high school students who were coming into the United States with little or no English experience, and some hadn't even been in school. And I was in a middle school classroom, and a teacher had the student handing out the paper, and there was a student sitting in the back of the classroom, and I walked around the classroom. And I was just expecting the student to hand the other student a paper. I didn't know one student from the other. The student who was handing out the paper skipped the student. And I was like, oh, you didn't give him a paper? She said, Miss, he can't read it anyway, and kept going. So that was one instance. But that, in a lifetime of that child in that classroom, in that school, do you know how impactful that is? Because how many days have that child sat in the classroom where now there's a practice that the student even know to ignore the child? Right? And then the child was only receiving support when he went to the ESOL teacher. That's wasting instructional time first, and we're setting the student up for failure. So that was my first time experiencing that. And so I went back, like, we have to do something. What are we doing? What are the supports around? And then we started working with the ESOL teacher in a company because I wanted to then understand students' academic ability in their native language as opposed to the English language. So sometimes when we see students who are having difficulty because English is not their first language, we kind of lend it to that there's a learning challenge when necessarily it's a language challenge. So those are some of the first experiences that I had that kind of catered to now, that that is a concern of mine. Lastly, how do I do that? As Chief Academic Officer, when we started building the new academic framework, it was important for us to establish some beliefs about who we are and how do we, who we are as an office, and then how are we supporting the students that we serve? What is our, what are our principles and our foundational beliefs? So we started with culturally responsive teaching. The name changed to being culturally and linguistically inclusive. Now, when my team and my leaders meet, we don't meet as what is happening in curriculum, what is happening in multilingual, what is happening in special education, what is happening with MTSS. Everyone is together. And the presentation and the development for leaders is around a collaborative process, a cohesive process, because I want teachers to walk away from their professional learning with all of the tools that they need to support the students that are in front of them in a cohesive manner. So we're talking about grade level instruction, grade level standards-aligned Tier One MTSS instruction. And then what? And all of that is there in one package. So that is where we are now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next question is going to be asked by Member Johnson.
This is kind of like a Tupac question, so if you need me to repeat anything, let me know. Given the stress in the lives of young people today, and the social, academic, and even financial pressures they face, how can educators in general, and a superintendent in particular, have an impact on the emotional well-being of our students? Second part of the question is, what social-emotional learning supports have you had success with? And/or what would you look to implement?
As the leadership of the district, understanding the stress of students, I would also say, in supporting students, we need to make sure that we support teachers also. This is important because while students are, again, at the core of our work, if our teachers are not well, do not feel supported, their level of stress is going to also be on students. Right? So I want to make sure first that my teachers and my leaders have social-emotional supports and have opportunities for social-emotional wellness. Then, I want to ensure that they have strategies to support their students in their school environments, classrooms, whole group, and/or individual. I think allowing opportunities for classroom conversations, classroom collaboration, we had to call them classroom meetings, that takes away sometimes from instructional time, but there are opportunities to embed them. There's a CASL framework that I know, I talked to some leaders here, that the district is familiar with the CASL framework, which embeds social-emotional and academic development into one. And I think that that is an opportunity in using the CASL framework where we're combining academic, social-emotional, academic and social-emotional development together. I think that the, there are opportunities for, I'm going to call it, healing to occur in the classroom. I think it's an opportunity for conflict resolution. I think it's an opportunity to raise some social justice issues that students may have. If you have classroom meetings facilitated by the leader and then eventually facilitated by students based on age groups, will allow that community building to occur in the classroom that will also help social-emotional learning. On a deeper end, supporting students in specific strategies, what do you do, when, is also important at every age group. I also think having safe spaces, there are two forms of safe spaces. Safe spaces that can exist within Worcester, not necessarily in a school, where students can go for, to meet some of their basic needs, if not being met, where students can go based on whatever the topic and/or concern that is giving them some level of stress or social-emotional discourse. In the building, we should have safe spaces also. Safe spaces is a place where I can go, where I can share my thoughts with adults. And we have counselors that, we have counselors that actually are in schools that can do that now. But having that place, having some tools and resources for students to support de-escalation of students, and then allow students to go back into the instructional program. I think I answered both of those questions. Other strategies that I would implement just on the preliminary conversations that I would have with them, some opportunities for students to lead conflict resolution, some students to lead, I call them like accountability sessions. If students are having a disagreement, train other students, student leaders, student government to support the reconciliation and conflict resolution for other students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Member Kamara.
What is your philosophy on discipline for students? Please share your past experiences and past practices with discipline both in and out of the classroom or school. of the classroom or school.
I'm going to start with, I always have these personal experiences, a personal experience that kind of changed my perspective on discipline. As a principal, I had some sixth grade students who waited for their teacher to open up the recess door, and the students were going up the steps the teacher was going up after the students. And by the time the teacher got to the top, was up to the third floor, the students in the classroom beat up one student badly. And in our system, there were, at the time, there was zero tolerance. So there were charges, disciplinary charges, for those students who who beat up the student. Now, they beat up a student, right? So there is some disciplinary action. But what I think about is, there were about 12 students, and what I think about is that one incident, how I handled the incident as a leader, believing that I was doing the right thing at the right time, implementing the disciplinary action, kind of changed the course of 12 students. Like, some students didn't come back to school because they were avoiding disciplinary action. For some students, that was the beginning of a track of disciplinary actions on the students. So when I reflect on, how do I handle discipline, really thinking through a code of conduct, right? So there are certain things legally that we are responsible for. But I'm also considering, when I think about discipline, when I determine what the correct behavior is, am I thinking about all of the students that I serve, or if I'm thinking through the lens of Malika, and this is the correct behavior, and this is how you respond? So when you ask me about discipline, I'm going to go back to what is the expectation for discipline, and how is it representative of all of the students that you serve? And how are you ensuring that, based on your culturally responsive teaching stance, is representative in a disciplinary description and/or process? In addition to that, my, my idea about, or position, I think you asked, or philosophy that you asked about, discipline, I think clear expectations are necessary for the function of school, right? I think that clear expectations are necessary for adults and students. I think that there is, there should be some, again, culturally and some culturally relevant expectations and strategies that are also aligned to the expectations for behaviors, right? So if you're telling me that I have to sit with my hands folded, is that representative of all of the students that we serve? One. Two, if it's not, and this is the expectation for whatever reason, how am I supporting students in that process rather than going straight to a corrective action because you're not doing what I asked you to do? Thirdly, I want to know what caused the discipline. This is important because I can implement a, I mean, I'm sorry, not what caused the discipline, what caused the behavior. I can correct the behavior, I can discipline the behavior, but if I don't get to the root cause of the behavior, I guarantee you the behavior will continue, right? So what caused the behavior, and how do I support the student in responding to that student's need based on intervention while at the same time sharing my expectation for discipline?
A ninth question will be asked by Member Novak.
Thank you. Please explain what level of autonomy and support you give to principals and to district leaders.
I think it's situational. I would like, I would like to say that I do collaborate. There's a, there's a high level of collaboration in my leadership. However, when I look at student data, there has to be some direction. So I am open to autonomy with a few, what do you call them? I'm going to say guardrails, a few guardrails that are important. One, it has to be student-centered. Two, it has to be based in data. Three, it has to be based in being culturally and linguistically inclusive. Four, it has to have supports aligned to support students and adults in whatever the autonomous decision is. I forgot my number. Thank you. Five, it has to have evidence, evidence of effectiveness via results-driven data. So if we can agree that the decisions that you make are aligned here, which should also be aligned to the strategic plan, the vision, vision and mission of the district, then we can talk about the level of autonomy. But if it's not moving student data in a positive way, then there has to be some level of leadership support to redirect that decision to support the students that we serve.
Thank you. Our final question is, what is your view of the role of the school committee? What is your vision for this partnership?
That was my question. I think the role of the school committee, that's a, that's a good question. I think the role of the school committee is to hold the superintendent accountable. I think the role of the school committee is also to be a support for the superintendent. I think the role of the, the school committee is to also be part of the message of what's happening in the district, why it's happening, be an advocate for funding and/or decision-making that is impacting the entire district. What was the second part of the question?
The second part was, what is your vision for this partnership?
My vision for the partnership, I would say just accept Malika as Malika, but I do think the vision of the partnership is to, let's have a clear understanding about the goals of the district, goals around our communication, goals around what is evidence of effectiveness, and the, the school committee communicating to me what is it that they expect of me as the superintendent. I think the, as the superintendent of the district, I should be able to call, based on committee leads, the mayor, to be able to say, hey, this is what I'm thinking, this is the problem I have, or here's a victory I need to share with you, and be able to bounce ideas off or have that collaboration with you before I make decisions. Let's say school closing is a matter of fact, or thinking through masks or things like, we need to have that collaboration before, and one is, one voice when we are talking to the, the school staff, well, the district staff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was our final question, and we'll give you time for a closing, or if you have any questions, you can ask those questions if you'd like.
The communication question was my question, but I do have, what do you, what is the expectation for the first six months of the superintendent based on the current status of Worcester Public Schools? What would you say are the priorities or we would need you to do within the first six months?
I think you might get several different answers, but I think, I think one of the priorities definitely would be understanding the community, the teachers and the students, and really get to know them. And I think you already answered the question a little bit earlier tonight when you were talking about your vision and your strategic plan, and how do you get there? So the first few months is really understanding the community, the district, I should say the district, which includes, you know, the students, parents, and teachers, and all educators, not just that, in the Worcester Public Schools. So then from there, know whether we address our, you know, our successes and our shortcomings, and how do we close those achievement gaps? Anybody else?
I would also like to add, I think definitely like the roundtables that you mentioned will align with the mayor's comment to that in terms of like getting to know the community. I think that roundtable idea, Equity Roundtable was that the title was, yeah, so I think that would really get, you know, one-to-one, not one-to-one, but one-to-one on like who everyone is in the community and bringing different people to the table, and then having that to be aligned with the equity tool, which we currently do not have, and a diversity equity, no, yeah, so diversity tool for hiring, that's what I mean, right? So using all of that, the voice of those people to be able to help with that. And on the other hand, too, it allows for you to get to know them vice versa, too. Yeah.
Member Mailman?
I think it's a huge listening tour in all the areas that everybody's already talked to, but I think, I also like your description of truthfulness because I think this district, this city is craving for, tell us, tell us what, what you're thinking, share with us your concerns, not just the atta boys, atta boys are really important, but, I mean, we all feel this pressure coming out of COVID, and I think we're looking for truthfulness and transparent communication and a whole ton of listening.
Member McCullough?
Thank you, and I'll just add briefly, I agree with those thoughts, and I think something that you mentioned along the way was what's working as far as communication is going now, and what tools that we could be using, you know, the, perhaps the weekly messages, whether it's a YouTube message, a newsletter. But to the point that Member Mailman made, you brought up the, you know, if the community doesn't know what we need, you know, they're not going to know what we need for partnerships. So I think, again, sharing the successes and the needs of the community are going to be things that are important, so really that understanding of what's working and what needs to be stronger.
I have one more question.
Sure.
What level of autonomy does the superintendent have from the school committee?
Well, you have, you have a lot of autonomy. You run the district, and we set, help you set the policy. And I think you answered the question great earlier in the sense that we work cooperatively together, and you're bouncing off the school committee, and you're representing any type of change as, together as a group, but, but you are the, you would be the superintendent of schools, and you would run the school district, and, and so you'd have a lot of autonomy in that area.
Okay, thank you. So lastly, I have, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Member Johnson?
Thank you. And you spoke about it, you talked about, you know, with the autonomy, it's the collaboration and the partnership that you would have with us as school committee members. Again, we spoke earlier about this and the importance of that and moving forward. So again, it's a partnership, it's collaboration with us, it's having that open, honest, transparent communication at all times, even though it could be some difficult things going on, but continuously having that open lines of communication is important.
Member Kamara, followed by Member Novak.
I mean, the only thing I'll add is, I think that, I think after Massachusetts went through ed reform in 1993, which reformulated the role of the school committee in Massachusetts, the role is pretty delineated, clearly delineated, and I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues in terms of their understanding of what part of it is, is ours versus what part of it is yours. I mean, we have four main roles, policy goal, policies, goals, budget, and evaluating the superintendent, and then we're the collective bargaining association. So, I mean, outside of that, as I think, in particular, Member Johnson has mentioned, I think that that notion of us as a governance team is something that's important, but within those separate purviews.
Member Kamara?
Right, and like the only thing I can probably just add to that is that, like you mentioned this data, for us to be like data-oriented, and through different tools, or even through like the strategic planning, and, and you mentioned this yesterday because I think we had dinner with you, and how using, you know, data to present to a school committee, school committee based on things of importance, like academic, closing the achievement, yeah, so closing the achievement gap and, am I saying that correctly? Yeah, closing the achievement gap, and then improving, you know, the performance in the district at large, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to end with a statement. One, I want to thank you for this experience from the first interview that I said was quite impressive, based on the number of people who participated and demonstrated their level of interest and investment at Worcester Public Schools, to the support of you all and welcoming of you all since I've been here, and sharing where we are as Worcester Public Schools, and learning who I am as Malika Savoy Brooks, and then valuing me as a professional and valuing me as an individual as I share my, my story with you in the time that we shared together. I do also want to thank the staff and leaders in Worcester Public School, one for welcoming, letting me go into their meetings and in their schools and in their classrooms, and everyone was welcoming. I enjoyed the questions from the students. I enjoyed engaging in conversations that were about students. And like I said earlier today, when we think about students, we have to think about the people who support them because that is the, the system of the district. And for people who wonder why Worcester Public Schools, from Malika Savoy Brooks, who's coming from the school district of Philadelphia, I always do my data investigation, and I looked at, first, before I even looked at Worcester's data, I went to Massachusetts State, Massachusetts Department of Education's website. And on the website, I was able to collect some data regarding Worcester Public Schools and comparing to other schools in the district. In addition to that, what attracted me was, one, their curriculum frameworks, and then, two, their framework for culturally relevant, culturally responsive teaching, I think that's what they call it, or culturally relevant teaching, I'm quite, quite sure of the term that they use. And then going to Worcester's website, and again, going to Worcester's website because I had been there for the, the initial interview, and aligning what the state requirements and the state initiatives are to where Worcester is in their initiatives, and seeing that alignment there around culturally relevant teaching, the focus on curriculum and instruction, focused on how we're supporting the diverse needs of our students, and then looking at who I am as a leader, as an educator, focused on the through system, the school, the school district is a through system, to ensure that every student leaves us with post-secondary effective and successful post-secondary opportunities, whichever they choose, and we are part of building that, that pathway or those pathways for them. That is also representative in the work that you do. So when I think about who I am as a leader and what I saw on the websites and what I saw in person, it was like, it is, it's like a fit. So I wanted to share that with you, and I wanted to share that I'm leaving here today, leaving, well, tomorrow morning, leaving tomorrow morning with that affirmation and that confirmation that I am doing the right work at the right time. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for the process.
Thank you, no, thank you, thank, also, also, thank you, Dr. Savoy Brooks, I appreciate it, and I hope you enjoyed your stay here today and meeting everyone, and clearly you have, and I think you did a great job tonight. Thank you. And we will have a motion to adjourn. Roll call. Am I the lost talent?
We might have.
She might be muted.
Okay.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Uh, Member Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, thank you.